Thirty PM, if you could please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that Counselor Buller is absent and he is not expected to be at the next meeting either. He is taking a little vacation with his family. We'll go to the agenda. We have a couple of additions that came out of land use and legislation earlier today. The first is a cigarette license for Midwest Dabbin Cabin. The second would be a edidereet license for the Twisted Tacos food truck. Second, third one would be to allow the Twisted Tacos food truck to be set up in Smokey Bear Park for June fourteenth through the twenty-second. And the last is for a food truck license for on-the-hook fish and chips. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those additions. We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Go to the minutes of May twentieth, a regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. And the minutes of the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting, Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the resolution approving the transfers and payments of claims. We have International Falls transfers going to the one-on-one general fund in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's coming from the eight-twelve lodging tax fund. We have accounts payable, International Falls claims of two hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Airport commission claims of thirty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And airport major capital project claims of eighty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, for a total of accounts payable of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, geez, I'm gonna get to Counselor Kaler.
Quite all right.
All right, we have a motion.
I don't have to do none of that. I'm there twice, I'm good. You guys carry on.
You know what, maybe this time, just because we have some people missing, let's just do the roll call this way. So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Go to audiences. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward that's not on the agenda? You'll have an opportunity later at the meeting as well. We'll go down to new business, Independent School District three sixty-one referendum information. Jessica Crosby, school board director.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm Jessica Crosby.
If you want to come up and then just speak, and then that way everyone can hear you.
And if you want to take it off of there, if you're gonna move about, you should.
Oh, my gosh.
Is it on, the light on? There we go. I'm all over this. Yeah, there's a PowerPoint behind you. So I'm on the School District three sixty-one Board of Education, and I wanted to come here today to inform about the upcoming referendum in August. So we're gonna talk a little bit about how we got here, what our ten-year facility plan is, the community engagement that we did, board action, and the questions. There we go. So kind of how we got here. So this started way back in February of twenty-two, even before I was on the school board. They engaged with a facilities consultant through a competitive process, so they had, the consultants kind of did a bid process, even though it wasn't really a bid financially, but they went through a competitive process. They picked the facilities consultants, which is called Nexus. It's out of the Twin Cities. And then in March twenty twenty-two to February twenty twenty-three, that company came up and did a comprehensive analysis, meaning they went through everything. They went into closets, they went under the stairs, they went in the basement, they went everywhere. So that happened over the course of a year. They had to get different specialists up here to do that. Then in June of twenty twenty-two, we surveyed the staff on facility needs, so all the teachers, janitors, the cooks, everybody that works in the school, kind of what do you need, what are we lacking? And then in February twenty twenty-three, they reviewed the audit findings with administration. That's when I first started on the school board. And then we reviewed, can you, oh, I'm standing behind you. We reviewed the audit, they reviewed the audit findings with the board, and then in April of twenty twenty-three, we formed a community facilities task force and surveyed the community. So you might all remember getting that survey in the mail about, you know, here's what we're kind of proposing and, you know, prioritize this from your perspective in the community of what you would like to see at the school. In July of twenty twenty-three, we got that, those survey results back. I work for a company where anything less than a hundred percent participation is considered failure. But we did get what they considered to be a great response on this type of a survey. It was about eighteen percent, which I thought we could have done better, but about eighteen percent of the community responded. Then we did a task force review of survey results, so that task force, the community task force, reviewed all the survey results from the community, and they formed a recommendation. And then finally, the task force came and presented to the school board and talked about what the recommendations were, what the priorities were from their perspective and from the community's perspective. So really what we did was a ten-year facilities plan, and this book right here is what Nexus gave us. This is a forty million dollar, ten-year facilities plan for all the facilities in School District three sixty-one. Obviously, we have recommendations for the most critical needs, and so we broke it down into, you know, critical need, next three years, and then medium need in the next five years, five to seven years, and then the later needs of seven to ten years. So it's all broken down in the book. The most critical needs that we thought should be addressed and the recommendations from the community were Building Infrastructure, Technology, Safety, Security, and Americans with Disabilities Act, interior finishment, finishes, site improvements, and educational adequacy. So what that means is what the community engagement task force kind of came forward and they said, you know, this is what they did. They looked at the education. Education nowadays is different from when you and I went to school. And I mean, I, it wasn't that long ago that I was in school. But it's completely different. Like, we were focused on teacher-based learning. Teachers lectured, we took notes, we studied for the tests, you took the test, and you went. Now, education is based more on group learning. They do group projects, that students are learning from each other. They're volunteering more, you know, it's more group-based learning. So that's kind of what we're talking about with Twenty-First Century Education. So they went through the facilities as well, the community group did. They took the teacher and staff facility reports like we said before, and then they recommended that plan to the school board. I'm gonna go to the next one. All right, so what are our top priorities? Our top priorities are, and this is again based on community input, major building systems, safety and security at the elementary school, update the classrooms, labs, and technical education, and then the building exterior and site work. Those are our top four priorities. Now, the other thing we asked on the survey was what is the tax tolerance, because we all know that people in our community are pretty much taxed out. So what is the tolerance in the community? Can we do a forty million dollar referendum? Probably not. So what is the tolerance? The tolerance was determined based on the responses from the survey to be at about fifteen million. So if you want to switch to the next one. So key improvements at the high school, and I'm just gonna pick out a couple here. So big things at the high school, the kitchen. It's all the facilities, all the appliances are old and outdated. Some of them don't work. They've been taped together with duct tape, some of them. And also the flow of the kitchen. It's not like when we went to school and how they served meals. They do it completely different now. So one of the biggest things is to totally revamp that kitchen. Also at the high school, you know, when you walk through the front doors and the concession stand is right there, and it gets real congested in the front area there. So what they're gonna do is the wall between the cafeteria and the hallway, that glass wall, is gonna be removed, and it'll become more of a common area. And then with the redo of the kitchen, they're gonna put the new concession stand back in the kitchen so that it won't be so congested when you come in. Another thing is the bathrooms all need to be redone. The bathrooms will get redone at the high school. Data cabling, they redid the data cabling seven years ago. It's already outdated. I mean, you guys know that. It goes fast. And I'll show you on these grid, on these layout boards in a little bit, but you can kind of see here, this is the elementary school. So at the high school, here's that area, commons area, kitchen's gonna be all redone, expanded commons right here, this wall will be removed. And then the bathrooms, purple is heavy remodeling, so. And then another huge project that they're gonna do at the high school is, which I think is kind of exciting, is in technical education. So back here, where we've got the shoprooms, having them interconnected in the back with a huge bay that spans across all these classrooms, so they can do projects together. So you'll have welding will work on part of a project, the woods, you know, would work on another project, drafting would draft it up. And then they'd have this huge bay in the back where they could all work on it together. So that's kind of exciting at the high school. I'm gonna go to the next one. At the elementary school, there's a few bigger things that need to be done in terms of Americans with Disabilities Act. I bet you didn't know that there is not an elevator in Falls Elementary. We need to get an elevator in Falls Elementary. For the last however many years, to comply with ADA, they have had one grade level classroom on the first floor and other ones up above. So there's always gonna be a first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade classroom, one classroom on the first floor for a child that can't maybe make the stairs, and then all the other ones upstairs. Having an elevator would enable the classrooms to be together and the teachers to work together. Another huge improvement at Falls Elementary, I don't know if you've been there lately, but where the preschool and the kindergarten rooms are, the walls don't go all the way to the ceiling. They're three-quarter, literally, they're three-quarter walls. So there's a lot of disruption where you can hear, and also the special education classrooms are down there, and when they have any kind of disruption in the special education classroom, that carries over to the preschool and the kindergarten rooms. So that's a huge thing we're gonna do. The biggest thing, though, at Falls Elementary, because Falls Elementary is really not secure. The doors are locked, but if you get let in the front door of Falls Elementary, you do not have to go to the office. Okay? So if you get in the door and somebody just flips the button and doesn't look, somebody could get into Falls Elementary and just walk around the school. So the proposal is, at the front here, where you do walk in now today, adding a whole administration wing so that you would have to come into Falls Elementary, be in the office, get checked in, and then be allowed into the school. And then where the current offices are, make it into a STEM STEAM area to promote that kind of education with the elementary school students. So that's some huge, at Falls Elementary, there's probably the most inside work to be done. So there's two questions gonna be on the ballot, okay? Question two is contingent on question one. If you say no to question one, you're basically saying no to question two. If you say yes to question one, you can still say no to question two. But if you say yes to them both, that's what we'd be happy with. So this is exactly how it's gonna read. And this one is related to the, it's gonna be actually fourteen point two million to provide funds to better the school and the facilities. And this all includes as well the outside work that needs to be done at the high school. If you pull up to the high school or the elementary school today, it looks pretty good. I mean, the brickwork looks pretty good. If you get close enough, you can see the growth between the bricks. It's called pintucking. I've learned a lot through this whole process. That's all gonna be fixed. The pool area, they need different better ventilation. That's why the building gets white in the wintertime, because all that chlorine seeps out, because they don't have the right ventilation. So we're gonna fix all that. So this is the first question, and then question two. Question two is related to some improvements that we want to make at the arena and at the stadium. Historic Bronco Stadium, we want to see this preserved, right? There are some fixes that need to be done, some preservation-type things that need to be done to the front of Bronco Stadium. Also, have you ever gone to the bathroom when you're at a football game? Yeah, it's a little horrifying. So the bathrooms are on the slate as well as the locker rooms. Now, there are locker rooms underneath the bleachers. They're not technically locker rooms. They really just have benches running around. There's no showers or lockers or anything. There's also no ventilation. So you can only imagine, especially in August when they have football games, how stifling it is down there. So getting the right ventilation down there, getting them some actual locker rooms. At the arena, kind of exciting. The proposition is to, on the west side of the arena, so if you're looking at the arena from the Falls High School parking lot, it would be the side to your right, so where the practice football field is, to expand out and add in varsity and junior varsity locker rooms for the Bronco girls and Bronco boys hockey teams. Now, this will not only serve the hockey teams, because we're also gonna have a huge storage area in the side here for all the football equipment, for the guys when they practice out in that football field, track, softball, baseball. All of them would have a section in this area to store. So it'd be right there instead of having all these random little buildings all over. So that's question two. And again, you can say no to question two, it's another four million, but you can still say yes to question one, or you can say yes to them both. Now, how much is this gonna cost? That's what everybody wants to know. So they did again a survey, and the average cost of a home in International Falls right now is a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Kind of an odd amount, but that's what it is. So if you answer yes to question one, and you have a home worth about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's gonna cost you eight dollars a month on your taxes for question one. Yes?
You said a hundred and sixty thousand for International Falls.
Yes.
Don't you mean for the school district?
Well, it'd be within the school district, yes.
Because that's why, because our average is only about ninety thousand in International Falls.
Okay, well, they did a, yeah, we thought it was high, too.
Yeah, that's including the lake properties, that's the school district. I just wanna make sure that's clear, because we're considerably less here in town.
Yeah. Yes. It's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point. If you say yes to question two, it's only gonna add three dollars a month if you have a home worth about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So eleven dollars a month is a fancy coffee, if you think of it that way. And it's an investment in our children. I know a lot of people say, why don't you just build a new school? It costs about four hundred million dollars to build a new school. So to do fourteen million of improvements on what we have, when what we have is, can be improved, I think that's the right, personally, I think that's the right way to go. If you want to go to the next one. So that's all I have. Did you guys have any questions? And I'm here just to inform, we're trying to get the word out. I know a lot of people don't understand exactly what the referendum is for. They think we're just asking for money, operating expenses. That's not what it's for. This is for the kids. You can see there are gonna be significant improvements in classrooms and class, you know, updates in the athletic fields. We need to do that. I can also tell you, we've applied for grants. We received a solar grant from the Minnesota Power. So we are putting in a solar panel field in the back of the high school, which is pretty exciting. Our investment is only about a hundred thousand dollars, and we'll make that back within three years.
Just out of curiosity, why wouldn't that go on the roof?
Something with the way the roof is built. I don't, I asked the same question. I'm like, doesn't that go on the roof? But no, it doesn't. So.
Putting that in terms I can understand.
Yeah. Something to do with the roof. I don't know, I don't know the technical part of it, but yes.
So if this passed, how long would it take before all these?
Good question. So if this passes, and the reason we chose to have the ballot, have it on the ballot in August rather than November is because if we get it on the ballot in August, we can get all the specs done, get all the bids in, get all the people hired to start the spring of twenty twenty-five. Yeah?
How many surveys did you send out, do you know?
Every mailbox in International Falls, every registered mailbox in International Falls got one, in our school district.
Okay, that's right.
In our school district.
Do you know how many that is?
I think it was probably close to six thousand.
Because, I mean, that's how you got to the eighteen percent return?
Yeah.
You'd have to know what the total.
Nexus, yeah, they have, they have the exact total. I would imagine around six thousand.
Because you had way more than, than what you guys are looking at doing in this bonding, are you guys coming up with a game plan of setting money aside to be able to do some of the other work once this gets finished?
That's a good question. We actually do have money set aside. There is specific money for capital improvements, and we do have some of that, like for the solar project. Our hundred thousand was already budgeted in there for that, and like I said, we'll make that back in three years. So yes, we do get a certain amount of money every year for capital improvements. That's maintenance. Like, we've kept up the roof of all the buildings and, you know, that kind of internal, we replaced the boiler at the high school and at Falls Elementary. So this also includes the air, air exchangers. While we don't need air conditioning in our schools, the air exchangers do make it more comfortable, and they've only got that in part of the elementary school, so it's to complete that project and then do, like I said, all that ventilation down by the pool. So.
We just went through a process very similar to this. We understand. You're speaking to the choir.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I guess one thing I do want to point out, too, is, and this isn't meant to sound snarky, I guess would be the way to say it, but as a school district, we could get about ten million dollars without going to referendum that would still raise the taxes. But we decided that that's not how we want to do this. We want to do it the right way. We want people's input, and we want people to vote. So, you know, I hate to say that, and it sounds, like I said, kind of snarky, but it's the reality. There is funding out there available, available to us to get without being voted on. And we're choosing not to do it that way.
Any other questions?
I have this book if you guys want to look. This picture actually struck me the most. This is the sanitary sewer replacement in the high school.
You've been talking to Ted Bro.
Yeah, where is Ted? We need him. Yeah, no, I, yeah, well.
This is down by the tech rooms.
And there is a lot of, because that's sixty-plus years old now.
They ain't gonna make it.
Nope.
I'm just gonna send that right to Ted.
Yeah, say that's at the high school.
I was trying to send him a pickleball video yesterday, but I couldn't get it done. Yeah.
And there's lots of pictures in this book, so if you want to look at it after, I'll stay, and if you want to page through it, feel free. But thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
This is great.
And I'm assuming they're talking about a different type of group learning that I, than I used in high school? Yeah.
This is in-school, that's.
Oh, group, oh, group learning.
You slept on a rug, didn't you?
Yeah.
Kinniters.
Yeah, group learning, yeah.
All right, let's go to item number two, a mayoral proclamation observing the eightieth anniversary of the D-Day invasion, June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, approve the order of removal or repair in the matter, the matter of hazardous building located at three oh eight Fifth Street. City Attorney.
So like all the other orders to remove or repair, this is just asking for you to sign it, and we'll get it served. Hopefully, they take care of it within sixty days if it doesn't happen. That way, it allows me to bring it into court. This building is the apartment building over this way that got burnt. Yep. And the fire marshal, I know, has tried a little bit to work with the owner. I made one phone call to try work with the owner. We're not really sure if we're gonna get pushback or compliance, but this is the easiest way for us to find out and stay on track.
Just before we go to a motion second. If this building is insured, why isn't this just happening naturally? That's the questions I always have on these buildings.
As a requirement, like from the insurance?
Yeah.
You can, it can depend on the type of payout you take. So assuming he didn't want the funds to put back into the building to put it back up to market value, he, similar, like when you total a car, you can just get paid a lower amount for your totaled car. You get to keep it and do whatever you want with it. It's just a lower amount, and that is probably what happened, if he's not looking at fixing it.
So did I understand right that the insurance will cover hauling all the debris and all the stuff out, right? That's what I heard.
If that's what they.
Pick clean it up.
If.
The city won't get stuck with.
No, this way it would.
Huh?
This way the city would.
Yeah.
We can't make the insurance pay.
Ah, I was told that the insurance would cover it.
Most likely, the way he took out his insurance claim money was not that way.
Ah.
So this ultimately gets billed to the city. We put it on their taxes.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I got it second-hand, then, not firsthand, information.
There you go.
Yeah.
Did we learn our lesson?
Yes.
All right, so we have a, oh, Chair would entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have a request from the police chief to suspend calendar parking for the annual outage of PCA, June fourteenth through the twenty-fourth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, you're fast.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right, next we have approve volunteer-paid on-call firefighter roster as presented by the Fire Civil Service Commission, and approve hiring of the top six with an effective date of July first, twenty twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion, I already voted. I can't do that, four zero. Trying to mess up the whole thing. All right, acknowledge the certificate of clinical excellence presented to the International Falls ambulance service by the Minnesota Emergency Services Regulatory Board. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, to acknowledge that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. So this is, this is good stuff, guys. We have such a good ambulance here in our community. I know that we talk about how we're struggling with it. There's been some financials that are gonna be coming to the city out of the legislature to try to help with our ambulance, but this really goes to show the good work that our ambulance is doing in our community, and I just, I just want to say thank you to the chief and all of his staff that makes this possible.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to agree in that, yeah, knowing that they're award-worthy, well, I don't believe come to a shock to any of us that they get the recognition. And also, just like that, I talked to an individual who had personal connection with accident up by Island View last week, and how impressed he was with the ambulance and the fire department and the whole operation.
Took the jaws of life to get those girls out, right? That's what I heard. Awesome, awesome work.
All right, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Motion carries four zero. All right, now we have the couple that came up, and I don't know what order they're in, so we'll just go, first come first served. All right, now we have the couple that came up and I don't know what order they're in, so we'll just go first come, first served. We have the on-hook, on-the-hook fish and chips. This is a mobile food license. It passed the land use and legislation earlier. The chair would entertain a motion to approve that license.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries four zero. Now we'll go to, it's just so weird in our world, the Midwest Dabbin Cabin, a cigarette license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion from Councilor Wagner, second by Councilor Kaler. The, the one big discussion that we had at land use and legislation about this specific one is they filled out on their form that they are going to be a smoke shop and the only thing that we, we regulate in the city for a smoke shop would be a twenty-five dollar cigarette license. They also have hemp on there and we had a lengthy discussion about the ability to be able to sell hemp products in the city. It brought up a bigger conversation, but this license specifically is just for cigarettes. The conversation that we had though is we have other places in our community that sells THC, beer, soda, I don't know how you want to, and it just, it's sold on the shelf. There's no, it's not behind the, the counter or anything like that and we just, we're starting to really have some questions and the Department of Cannabis in the state hasn't formed any rules or guidance on any of this. And we're, we're just kind of meandering a road. So I just wanted to bring that up, that that was one of the discussions that we had. I know our city attorney's been keeping up on, on all the rules and regulations and we keep it as a permanent question on the land use and legislation to be updated on that. But this one before us is literally just a cigarette license. Any questions? All right, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Motion carries four zero. Next we have, first we'll go with the license for, this is a license for Never Quit LLC Twisted Tacos Food Truck. They, I believe, as of right now, do not meet all the requirements, but there's something that we have to put a contingency on with this?
Yes, we're waiting for approval from the Minnesota Department of Health and I did speak with them today and upon application, they would receive that within two weeks.
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve this on contingent that they get the Minnesota Department of Health license.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion?
So tell me that motion again.
So the, the motion is to approve the license and it will be approved if she gets a follow-up from the Department of Health saying that he meets all the qualifications for the Department of Health.
When do you think that follow-up was going to be?
He's, Mr. Headkey indicated he was sending the application today and Jared from the Minnesota Department of Health said it would take one to two weeks to complete that. So I would give it the two full weeks.
Okay.
And he would actually have the actual certificate that the city requires.
Yeah.
So then I'm assuming he's just parking in precarious ways in different parking lots and.
As of right now, he has.
Yes.
He is not operating in the city. He's operating in the colony at this current time.
That's where I've seen it. In the colony.
Yeah, he is, we have not heard that he's selling food out of that truck in the city limits. The truck has been in the city limits. He said he drives it to town to fill it up with, to stock it and things at the food store. That's what I.
Good enough.
Any other clarification or discussion? All right, hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Okay, now we go to the last one. Now this is the, the one that gets slightly dicey in my world. So this is to allow these, the Twisted Tacos food truck to set up in the park for the outage. Now that's June fourteenth through the twenty-second. The reason I have just a little hesitation on this is because there's a possibility he doesn't have his license before the, the date of the event.
That was my.
So, the, please.
Can I add to that? So I just want to explain, I did explain Mr. Headkey that if we did not receive it, for example, by the fourteenth, that he should not open up in the park until we receive the certificate from the Minnesota Department of Health.
Okay, uh, makes it a little bit easier. So, all right, so then I guess the, I would, Chair would request that we move forward to allow the Twisted Tacos food truck to be in Smokey Bear Park, June fourteenth through the twenty-second, pending him having all, all of the things right. And this would cost a hundred dollars per the, the reservation fees that the city has.
He, he takes and brings it to you, Lisa?
The certificate.
Certificate?
Yes.
So you visually see it and?
I have to have it in my hand.
Okay.
Yep. He won't, Jared from Minnesota Department of Health said he would not have a paper copy to him, it'd be a mail by the fourteenth, but he could have it by email and we would accept an email copy. And I can confirm that with the Minnesota Department of Health also.
Okay.
All right, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve that setup in the park.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Go second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion?
Did I just, and that's not telling anybody how to run his business, but it sounds like we had a food truck before we needed, knew all what we needed to be able to operate it. Eric just decided to start doing it and telling, I'm just curious, that's all.
So I can explain that to you. We have been working with Mr. Headkey for probably a couple of months now. He's fully aware of what is required, just has not completed in time and fashion.
All right, thank you. And I just wanted to add, one of the other conversations that we had at land use and legislation is this is kind of bizarrely odd that this is the only person that has reached out to us to set up for the shutdown. This is the last meeting we have before the shutdown. We usually have at least two that are set up there and that would never have included this gentleman. So it's just, it's just kind of weird. I mean, we've always had people reach out to us way before now for the shutdown. So in a way, I'm really glad that we have one person there for the contractors to be able to go out and get some food from. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we'll go to the reports of administrator, attorney, department heads, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I have nothing additional.
Okay, city attorney?
I don't have anything additional and I'm going to split. My son's playing T-ball, so I'm going to run.
You gotta get there and coach third base?
I don't coach him. I, I will help my daughter, but not my son.
Yeah.
He's too much for me.
Most of the.
Yes.
There you go. Most of the T-ball I watch, they miss third and they just kind of go behind the bench and come all the way around.
This is the one, this is the program in the Falls for kids that are three and under.
Oh. Good luck.
Well, I can say, I'll do that as you get what you get.
Make sure you stop by and get some ice cream afterwards.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, department heads, chief, do you have anything? Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Anybody, anybody, anybody? I just, really quick, I don't think we have had the conversation. We did, we did receive some funding for the ambulance. It was somewhere between two hundred and seven and two hundred and eight thousand dollars. The chief and city administrator are waiting for an email to come through. If everybody that was eligible to receive money applies, we'll get the two oh seven, two oh eight. In the event that somebody does not sign up to receive the money, we get more. But we have to be those people to sign up and get the money, so watch your emails, please.
Yeah, I think to be clear, the application process closes the end of September.
Yeah.
They don't even have the application process hammered out. This isn't something that's it, the mail box is next week.
You watch for it. Why are you here right now?
Put sticky notes, put sticky notes on your computer.
Did I look today? Did I look for it today? All right. We're in audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? All right, we'll go to correspondence. In your packet you have Koochin County Commissioners Minutes from May seventh. Koochin County Respite Care and Hospice Task Force Letter, May twentieth. I just want to point out that the city administrator and myself had been sitting on that, kind of tag teaming the meetings and the reason that they were formed is Fairview was cutting some of their services in our community and a citizen-led group had stepped up to the plate and invited key, key players in our community. And they have got, Essentia is going to be hiring someone in our community to fill those roles for what that, that Fairview is.
That's good news.
So, yes.
I can add to that too, that For You Home Health is also open in our community and filling some of those gaps also. Not everything that Fairview did, but I was on a call with, or I was on the drawing a blank of the organization, but they had met with the coordinator there and she explained the program and For, For You Home Health is also doing some of those services also.
Excellent. Fantastic. International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Convention Visitors and Bureau meeting information is in your packet. And our next regular city council meeting will be on Monday, June seventeenth at five thirty. This meeting is adjourned.